Okay, welcome everyone to the Say County Board of County Commissioners meeting for December 14th, 2021. Have a roll call, please.
County Commissioners Octor Bartlett.
Here.
Best Duffy.
Here.
Lazara.
Here.
Deputy Director James.
Here.
Director Lapore.
Here. Announcement of the open public meeting law.
Ladies and gentlemen, the notice requirement of the open public meetings law has been satisfied with respect to this meeting specifying the time, date, and location, including the annual notice adopted, the reorganization meeting filed with the county clerk, and posted in the administration building and mailed to newspapers in accordance with the provisions of the law.
Stand for the invocation.
Oh God, who provides for thy people by thy power and rules over them in love, be gracious enough to bless thy servants, our county commissioners in this county of Passaic, that thy people may dwell in peace and safety through our Lord. Amen.
Commissioner Duffy.
Please join me in pledging allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence to remember all the men and women who have died while serving in the United States Armed Forces and who have died from the COVID-19, especially the 1839 residents of Passaic County. Also, please remember Elizabeth Betty Mae Cisco, 85-year-old from Wannacue, and the mother of the former Camp Hope director Karen Cisco. Thank you. Motion approved the minutes of November 23rd, 2021.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Bartlett.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Duffy. Roll call.
County Commissioners Bartlett, Best Duffy.
Yes.
Lazara.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lapore.
Yes.
Bartlett, yes, I missed you, I'm sorry. I moved it.
Approval of the proclamations.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Duffy. Second by Commissioner Bartlett. Roll call.
County Commissioners Bartlett.
Yes.
Best Duffy.
Yes.
Lazara.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lapore.
Yes.
Administrator's report?
Yeah.
Thank you, Director. First on my agenda is Rutgers Cooperative Extension Food Waste Team. Why don't you all kind of, Lazara, you want to bring your waste team forward? Can we think of a better name for this?
Yeah, it just sounds wrong.
So they are being awarded four significant awards for recognizing the team's educational efforts regarding reducing food waste in Patterson Public Schools and beyond. Director Lazara has a proclamation. Why don't we come to the podium over here?
Okay. So I have the honor of presenting this proclamation. And so it's a lot to think about. The work that you guys have done, I actually did some research on before we came here tonight. And this goes all the way back to 2017 when you had your first summit. And I'm going to read this proclamation, but just so you know, the work that this team has done and been awarded for speaks volumes about how we manage food waste because not knowing as much as, until I really read all this, I really was shocked. Like, food waste accounts for 113 billion pounds of food in New Jersey alone, at a cost of $161 billion. So there's ways around that, and this is what this team has done and working, I hope you can get to all schools actually, and put this into some type of use. I know it's a big ask, but, I mean, I was just amazed. Anyway, I'm going to read this proclamation, then I'll let the team here talk to you a little more and inform you about what the work is that they do. Whereas the mission of the Rutgers New Jersey Agricultural Experiment Station Cooperative Extension is to help the diverse population of New Jersey adapt to a rapidly changing society and improve their lives and communities through an educational process that uses science-based knowledge. Whereas Cooperative Extension strives to safeguard all goals to ensure healthy lifestyles are met, which involve providing productive futures for youth, adults, and communities while also enhancing and protecting environmental resources, ensuring economic growth and agricultural sustainability, and improving food safety and nutrition. And whereas the Rutgers Cooperative Extension Food Waste Team has recently been awarded four significant awards recognizing the team's educational efforts regarding reducing food waste in Patterson Public Schools and beyond. Whereas the best of the best team award was presented to the team in January of 2021 in recognition of their outstanding collaborative efforts and accomplishments in planning, implementing, evaluating, and marketing of Rutgers Cooperative Extension program at the county-state level. The team launched a new initiative to address food waste in public schools, which included pre- and post-programming audits at school cafeterias, training programs for the food service employees, teachers, and student education, and the creation of a toolkit to assist other schools in the undertaking of food waste reduction programs. Whereas the Rutgers Cooperative Extension Food Waste Team was awarded the 2021 Northeast Region National Urban Extension Leadership Award in May of 2021 at the National Urban Extension Leadership Conference. This award recognizes programs that demonstrate outstanding impact, community engagement, sustainability, and leadership in urban programming, in which the team has exhibited with their actions as they have worked collaboratively throughout multiple locations to reduce food waste in New Jersey schools with a focus on urban school districts. Whereas the COVID-19 pandemic proved to be a trying and unprecedented time for all in which the RCE team adapted outstandingly according to implemented food safety measures through their providing of virtual programming, through a website, recorded videos, and to-go kits sent home to students, and increased the training of 300 Patterson and New Brunswick food service staff to help distribute over 4,000 pounds of food to the unfortunate. And whereas, the RCE team received two awards in November of 2021 at the National Extension Association of Family and Consumer Sciences Annual Conference in Grand Rapids, Michigan. The National Extension Association of Family and Consumer Sciences Environmental Education, second place. National Award and Excellence in Teamwork, third place. National Award. Now therefore be proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners hereby publicly recognizes the Rutgers Cooperative Extension Food Waste Team for their significant contributions they have made to not only their surrounding communities, but also to the citizens of Passaic County and the state of New Jersey, and congratulate them on this honorary recognition. Congratulations. And I want to present this to you guys, and maybe you could just, come on, come on, don't be shy. And maybe you could tell everybody a little bit about what you do, because it's really amazing.
All right. Thank you so much for this honor and recognition of the work that we've done in Rutgers Cooperative Extension around food waste. So just so you all know, food waste is a really big problem in the United States. We waste about a third of the food we grow here, and yet, one in 10 people are hungry. And in fact, because of COVID, that number has increased, right? And so we try to work with schools to reduce waste, increase food access to those who need, and try to work around systems and policies to support, you know, healthy lifestyles within kids and try to improve our environmental footprint. And so I want to thank, you know, Rutgers Cooperative Extension Team for all of the work on this effort. We've kind of joined forces and learned from each other's expertise. Amy Rowe has helped kind of develop some of our environmental impacts of food waste and what that means for the environment. Cecilia Diaz connected us to the schools with, you know, climate education and gardening education within schools through the Master Gardener Program. And of course, you know, Mary Carmen helped with the 4-H development part, and Joanne was our backbone. She kind of made sure we were all on task all the time. So I wanted to thank the team, and I wanted to thank the county commissioners with a special shout-out to Commissioner James, because he actually attended one of our sessions with Phillips Academy Schools and was such a kind of supporter of our program. So thank you so much for this award.
Good job, Sarah, thank you. All right, the next two items on my agenda are two very exciting awards given to two hard-working county employees. We often sit up here on the dais, I know the commissioners have said it a million different times, how lucky we are to have such great professionals working for us at the county of Passaic. And within days or weeks of each other, at least, we had two of our employees be recognized by respective organizations that they represent. So the first on our agenda is Andrew Thompson, who, Andrew is our county architect. Andrew started working for the county, I think, in 2013. He was hired or recommended for hire by our former engineer who was here with us, Mr. Steve Edmund, who, Andrew, one of the things Steve said to convince us to hire him was that someday this guy is going to be named Architect of the Year, so we better grab him quick. But seriously, Andrew was just recently awarded Architect of the Year by the AIA, the American Institute of Architects. It is a great honor, and we are very proud of you, and we are very thankful to have you here as part of our Passaic County family. So Commissioner Best has a proclamation. I'll ask you to come up. I think your son is here with you. Why don't we ask him to come up? Why don't we ask everyone from engineering to kind of come up and stand behind Andrew and the commissioner?
Congratulations.
Except any retired employees, they should sit down.
Good evening, everyone. It gives me honor to be able to present this to Andrew. I think as soon as he joined the team, I was one of the people who were constantly calling him, asking him what he thought about all of the various projects we had going on in the county. He came at a really good time in the county. We have a motto here in Passaic County, "Rich History, Bright Future." And that bright future could only be made possible if we preserve our rich history. And we have several historic structures here in the county that were in desperate need of renovation and restoration, and he oversaw that process for us. And, you know, even though you kind of get bored by the day-to-day work of working on the jail and the motor pool and the sheriff's department, got to work on some really exciting projects such as our day mansion and the restoration of our historic courthouse annex. So I wasn't surprised at all to find out that he was named County Architect of the Year. So I'm excited to present him with this proclamation. Wanted to highlight just a couple of things here in the proclamation. If, for those of us who didn't know, he's extremely educated. He attended New York City Technical College, as well as Pratt Institute, and received a master's in science and architect in urban design from Columbia University, which is a really easy school to get into, from what I hear. Again, he worked on our courthouse annex, the restoration of Lambert Castle, and was responsible for overseeing the Passaic County Energy Savings Improvement Program, which got us these really nice lights before the lighting in here was horrible, so really excited about that. And I think most important, even more so important than anything on his very impressive resume, is the fact that he takes mentorship and giving back in all the positions that he's ever had, but especially in this one, extremely well. I had a chance to sit with him on a panel, was it in Montclair? It was in Montclair, at the university, speaking with a group of students around real-world practice of what they're potentially going to come into. So it's our honor in Passaic County to have you part of our team, and congratulations to you and your son Easton on this outstanding award. Here you go.
I just wanted to thank the county of Passaic, the county administrator, Mr. De Nova, the county commissioners. Really, it's an honor when I receive the award from AI New Jersey for Architect of the Year. As Commissioner Best has stated, I do a lot of mentorship. One thing I do is, no matter what, I always give back in my profession to what I can do. Also want to thank my department and the guys I work with, Jonathan Para, Norton Murphy, our newest addition, Isaiah Miller, who's actually the Architect of Assistant, who's just come in, brought him as an intern, and now he's just knocking it out. And, but mainly want to thank Steve Edmund, who gave me the shot to come in here. He was a tough boss. He was working on the county politics and the county, the way the county works, he kind of taught me the ropes, and really was just a life-learning lesson. I also want to acknowledge one person in the room who's here tonight, Mr. Bill Brown. He's Assistant County Architect for Hudson County, and actually, he's the one that told me about the position, so I wouldn't be here if it wasn't for him. So I want to thank Bill, and for, you know, folks like Steve Orsini, Daryl Sparta, who I work with, it's just an honor to work with you guys every day. So even today, I'm getting this nice proclamation, this award, tomorrow, back to work. And especially I want to thank, I know Sparta's going to be recognized also tonight, but Ms. Kelly Ruffel, who, with the historic preservation part of this job, is just a godsend. I've seen her work, I've seen her do her magic in meetings, I've seen her get the funding. I'm like, we're not going to get the funding. Kelly's like, don't worry, we'll get the funding. And just really want to appreciate working with her. And I look forward to many more years working with the county. Thank you all so much.
Hey, Steve.
I see at the planning board meeting.
I know, I know, I'm not in person. I got some plans I need you to look at, if you don't mind. Let's get in here, here we go. Front and center for like a little guy.
So he's the new one, right?
No. Smile with your eyes. Thank you, thank you. Congratulations.
Andrew, thank you very much, and congratulations again. All right, next, Kelly Ruffel. Come on down. So Kelly was one of the award recipients for the 2021 New Jersey Historical Commission and New Jersey Studies Academic Alliance. And I think the two quotes that jumped out at me as in the award letter that we received was that Kelly breathed new life into Passaic County's heritage activities, which is incredible. Kelly is the first director of our Historic and Cultural Affairs Department, and she has done a fantastic job of putting Passaic County on the map. And the other quote was that she put Passaic County tourism on the map. And she has really done both of those things tirelessly. Anyone who's worked with Kelly knows how hard she works. She is really responsible for the success of our county fair, and she has done just wonderful work in her short time here in Passaic County. I don't know, three, four, five years? How long have you been here? Five years? Seems like yesterday, Kelly. At any rate, I won't take your thunder any longer, Commissioner.
You already took the words out of my mouth. What more am I going to say? Except, Andrew, you'd be nothing without Kelly behind you. A good man, there's always a strong woman behind. It's my honor, it's my pleasure to read this proclamation. Whereas Passaic County Board of County Commissioners has a desire to recognize and congratulate Kelly Ruffel, who was one of the award recipients for the 2021 New Jersey Historical Commission, NJHC, and New Jersey Studies Academic Alliance, NJSA. So whereas, and it was referred to before, currently serves as Director of the Department of Cultural and Historic Affairs, which is responsible for supporting the arts, history, and historic preservation for the county of Passaic. The department plays a leading role in building a flourishing cultural environment that benefits and distinguishes Passaic County as a cultural destination, and also seeks to expand opportunities for the arts and history-based organizations in an attempt to increase public accessibility, awareness, and promotion of heritage sites. That's a mouthful. And you really have done a fantastic job. Whereas, prior to her role as Director of the Department of Cultural and Historical Affairs, Ms. Ruffel served as Principal Historic Preservation Specialist for the City of Patterson within the Department of Economic Development, where she assisted in public preservation projects such as development and implication, mention of design guidelines from historic, local historic districts within the city of Patterson. Whereas in addition to her directorship within the Department of Cultural and Historical Affairs, Ms. Ruffel also currently serves as the Assistant County Administrator for the county of Passaic, where she assists the county administrator in addressing the county's budget and fiscal issues. Whereas aside from Ms. Ruffel's work within Passaic County as far as overseeing and aiding in the preservation of the historical assets and sites, she serves as an adjunct professor in the Department of History at William Patterson University, bringing her experience, perspectives, and energy on undergrad students teaching 1,000-level history courses. Wow. Now therefore be proclaimed, my best part, it's like the Wizard of Oz. Now therefore be proclaimed by the Passaic County Board of County Commissioners that it hereby publicly recognizes and applauds Ms. Ruffel for the significant contributions she has made to the county of Passaic culture and heritage, as well as the exemplary leadership she has demonstrated to not the county of Passaic, but the state of New Jersey overall. Be it further proclaimed that this board wishes Kelly continued success, happiness, and success. Congratulations, Charlie.
Some words?
Speech.
Come on.
I know.
This is your 15 minutes of fame.
I'm not very eloquent with my words, and I feel weird not addressing you guys, but it's no surprise, I know, it's no surprise that I'm very passionate and enthusiastic about history and preservation. You know, I've made it like sort of my life, everything that surrounds my life, but I really wanted to receive this award or be able to get, you know, do what I do without the support of everyone here, Mr. De Nova, Matthew, the funding, allowing the Public Works Committee to get grants for the work that we do, you know, my partners, Michael, Jonathan, Andrew, Daryl, and Steve, you know, it's sort of teamwork, and, you know, I have a great staff, and there's only more to come. So thank you so much, and thank you.
Congratulations. Picture.
Turn that thing around.
Okay, I will.
Do you want? This is the first time I didn't walk into the glass. Oops. So little guy here?
I hate him, I hate him.
Okay, and then finally, on our agenda, Director, is our COVID-19 update. Anyone who has been here or has watched the last few meetings, Dr. Gungil has not been here with us, but we are very happy to see her live and in person. So you're going to come up here, Dr. Gungil? Welcome back, it is great to see you in person.
Do you remember how to do this now, or? No, I don't. Oh, there it is, okay. So good evening, everyone. It is my pleasure to be back here today. A lot has happened in the last three months, but being here really, being here is important to me. This work is important to me, so I'm really glad to be back doing what I love to do. All right, so let's move this along. This COVID has really hit us for a loop, you know, over this last 20 months, I think. And because of Omicron, we're seeing more and more cases again. This is day 643. This is crazy. In Passaic County and throughout the country, we're still seeing mostly the Delta variant, but now more and more we're seeing the Omicron variant. All right, Commissioner Lapore had mentioned about, I know, gee, I should go away more often. So updated. Okay, so he had mentioned 1,739 deaths, and that was as of Friday, and now we have six more people dying from COVID-19 in Passaic County. And the tragedy of it is that these people are unvaccinated. I mean, I think that's really what the message is. With all of the, you know, information out there, we are still finding that the people who are becoming ill and the people who are dying or becoming hospitalized and then dying are unvaccinated people. So that's really the message of this presentation, is that people need to get vaccinated. This slide shows that our positivity level has increased to 8.73, and we have had one more child with multi-system inflammatory syndrome. This beautiful slide that only Patrick and I would love, it just shows us again what's going on in terms of the Epi curve. going on in terms of the Epi curve. Let me just stop for a minute and just acknowledge Patrick, the county epidemiologist, and Ariseli, the community services coordinator. I think in my absence, you have seen what good people you have here in Passaic County. I think that their expertise and their knowledge is really very good for us, and their enthusiasm for what they're doing, I think it's a good thing for Passaic County. So, thanks if they're listening, and thank you for allowing me to bring some good people on board. So, on the left is the entire episodic, or in this case, pandemic, and on the right, it's showing from September to now how the cases have increased. You can see a little bit of a spike around September 20th, and then you see the numbers going down, and to the far right of the second graph, you're seeing the dramatic increase that we're experiencing right now. In fact, from November 15th to, I think it's December 7th, the increase is quite remarkable, from about 22 cases to over 100 cases in one day. This slide shows the positivity. On the left, it's from the beginning of the pandemic, and you've all seen this many times, the huge spike at the beginning of the pandemic. And as we shut everything down, we saw the curve being crushed, and as we reopen stuff, we have seen more cases increase. The slide to the right just shows the last three months from September to now, what has happened in terms of positivity. You can see that around October 28th, positivity was around 3.5%, and right now, it's over 8%. So, a lot more people are becoming ill due to COVID. This slide breaks down the cases by municipality, and obviously Patterson is about, has about 1/3 of the population of Passaic County, if memory serves, and approximately 1/3 of the cases of COVID-19. Clifton City, 16% of the cases, Wayne Township, 13% of the cases, and Passaic City, 10% of cases. This slide shows the work that's being done by your health department in terms of the vaccination, because as you know, we're able to, you know, do the social distancing, which I'm very proud of the room, I haven't been here, so I'm very happy to see that we're still following the guidelines, because that's really critical going forward. So this slide shows the work that we're doing in terms of vaccinations. You can see with the box on your left that we're starting to get the 5- to 11-year-olds. As all of you know, the Pfizer vaccine has been approved for people from 5 to 100, you know, 95. We're still having an issue with getting the young ones vaccinated, but as you see, we're starting to get some of those numbers. In the health department, we've vaccinated, we've administered over 60,000 vaccines, and that's a breakdown of first, second, third doses. To the right, you can see the pie chart shows you male and female breakdown, mostly female. Well, I mean, it's about the same, it's 53.9 and 45.9. And the vaccinations by age, there's a breakdown on the right and the left. You can pretty much see what that is. All right, so this slide, we actually get this information from the Department of Health, the State Department of Health, and it just shows you the number of residents of those municipalities that have been vaccinated. And the right is the same data, but in a graph form, so you can see at a glance who's getting vaccinated by Passaic County. All right, this is the breakdown by race on the left and ethnic group on the right. And there hasn't been much change in this slide. And this is a vaccination slide to date. December 31st was the first day of our clinic, and actually, now I think I'm gonna state that tomorrow, the 15th, is the first, is the date of the first vaccination, COVID vaccination in New Jersey, and it's gonna be a big deal, and I'll tell you more about it later. But this is showing you how robust our clinic was early on this year. It died down, and then you can see to the far right that it's becoming a little bit more robust again, and for various reasons. This is a breakdown, I guess, in color of the demand for vaccinations from our clinic. I like the right slide, I wanna talk a little bit about it, the right part of the slide, because this one shows the breakdown of doses. The blue indicates the first dose, the orange, the second dose, and the gray, the third dose. And you could see that December 4th, last Saturday, for example, we had a tremendous output of dose 3, and that clinic actually, we had two clinics on that date. We had one clinic in the city of Passaic, the other one was in Woodland Park, and between the two clinics, we had over 500 people vaccinated. And it was a combination of first, second, and third doses, but you can see the third dose slash booster dose was by far the most in demand. And we're seeing a lot more of that, thankfully. All right, so what's going on in terms of, are we reaching where we need to reach? And for the very young ones, the 5- to 11-year-olds, and this, first of all, this slide is for all of Passaic County, not just what Passaic County Health is administering. It is for all, whether it's the pediatrician, the hospital, all the health departments, CVS, Walgreens, everyone who is vaccinating people. Passaic County is at a deficit right now for the 5- to 11-year-olds, and that's concerning. Obviously, we know that they're not as symptomatic as an older person, they don't get as sick, but they certainly are able to spread the disease. So it's really very critical for the 5- to 11-year-olds to get their first dose. Of course, that just began a couple of weeks ago. The 12-plus, so, sorry, let me back up. 5- to 11-year-olds, we have 9% of that population being vaccinated. The 12-plus, 11%. And then for the adults, we're actually seeing about 78% of the adult population completing the entire regimen. We received this data from the State Department of Health, and we do the comparisons within, Patrick does the comparison within. So on your left is about a month ago, the vaccination rate by municipality. On the right is currently as of last Friday, I believe is the last data said that I received. And really, it's showing that, first of all, every municipality except for one in Passaic County has at least the 70%, which was the initial goal for us and for the state. The current goal is 85% of the eligible persons. So, it looks good for, you know, percentage completed, and it's getting better for persons who have received one dose. And again, that's for various reasons, for restrictions and so forth, that people are finally understanding the importance of being vaccinated. I just wanna point out that in the city of Patterson, there's a 96% vaccination rate of one vaccine, which, as we know, it's really important to get started, and it does offer some protection for a period of time. I'd like to also point out, and this is, you know, Woodland Park at 94%, I think that's important to point out as well, and, you know, we're all working, we have very high percentages with the one vaccine. Completion, you know, pretty good, but now we have to work on the next step, which is getting the boosters or third dosage, depending on eligibility. All right, so here are some updates. Every adult 18 and older is eligible for a booster shot, and Pfizer and Moderna vaccine recipients are eligible for a booster six months after their second vaccine. So if a person has had their second vaccine, and it's six months, they can get their third vaccine or booster. We know that Omicron is in New Jersey, but currently, most of our cases are of the Delta variant. And what we know about the Omicron right now is that it appears to be, I believe Pfizer has said that their vaccine protects against it, and all the vaccines protect against the Omicron variant, but various degrees. So the critical piece of information is that people need the booster shots, because after about six months, their protection decreases dramatically, and we have charts that shows the decrease. All right, so what's going on in your clinic in Passaic County Health? We're doing, we have a static clinic every Tuesday and Thursday at the Total Office from 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. No appointment necessary, so you can walk in, there is no major wait, maybe five minutes, 10 minutes. We continue to do home bounds, I believe it's every Monday and Wednesday. Call the office, and we will schedule you for a vaccine at your home, whether it is first, second, or third vaccine. Recently, we've been in the community doing vaccines in various places throughout the state. This is a nice slide that just shows you in color basically what the vaccine, you know, who's eligible, and actually with the color, it shows you the color of the vial that is, that has the vaccine in it. This is the one before the last slide. It basically says that, yes, we're doing the vaccinations, but I wanna also alert everyone that, as I mentioned earlier, tomorrow is the one-year anniversary of the vaccination program in the state of New Jersey. And so there is a big push by the State Department of Health to get boosted tomorrow. So every county, I believe every county now is on board, many, many municipalities, especially the cities, are doing big booster and all vaccines tomorrow. So for us here in Passaic County, the Passaic County Department of Health Services has a special clinic running from 9:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. You can get any vaccine, whether it's a first shot, second shot, booster, whether it's Johnson &amp; Johnson, Moderna, Pfizer, you're eligible, we have it, we will give it to you, and I really ask you to take advantage of the opportunity to get vaccinated. There are many people throughout the country, throughout the world, who do not have this kind of opportunity, and it's right here, we're asking you, we're telling you, we're providing it to you. Please, for those who can hear me and are not vaccinated, if you have any questions on the vaccine still, we can answer those questions, just be open-minded, and we have it available for you, please come and get it.
Dr. Gungil, don't go anywhere, please. Does anyone have questions?
Questions? Dr. Gungil, first of all, welcome back. The very low vaccination rate that we're seeing in that 5- to 11 age group, what can we be doing to increase that, and what are schools in Passaic County doing to make the vaccine available to students onsite and in conjunction with learning?
Yes, so it's a twofold issue. So we have actually reached out to the county superintendent of schools very early when it looked like a possibility, to see if we could schedule clinics at schools, and we have done, Passaic County Health has done clinics at schools. But the State Department of Health is also working with all of the schools, they've put out notices, they've had conference calls, I've been on some of the calls, where the state has said, if you want us to come, we will come, we will do the vaccines onsite. The state has now hired a contingency of vaccinators who will come to the schools and do the vaccines. Many of our counterparts here in Passaic County are also doing vaccines onsite, as is our health department.
Okay. Is there parental reluctance?
Yes, I mean, all of the myths and issues that we've seen for the adult vaccines are present with the children. I think most people might be more comfortable going to their pediatricians for vaccines, and there are a number of Passaic County pediatricians who have the vaccines available. I don't know if they're doing, you know, an outreach. I have a team that actually goes out the old-fashioned way, pounding the pavement with flyers, talking to people about vaccines, and hopefully, the message will get there.
That's great. And one more question, I think I missed it on the list of upcoming events. Where will you be this Saturday?
You know, I don't know. I did not look it up. I don't know, but I can tell you where we'll be tomorrow. I mean, tomorrow in our office, and then on Thursday, we'll be at the Phillips Academy from 3:00 to 7:00, doing vaccines onsite for the children, that I can tell you, because I just worked on that.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Yeah, my pleasure. Thank you.
So, Dr. Gungil, while we have you here, and for the benefit of the residents and people watching, back in October at our New Jersey Association of Counties Conference in Atlantic City, Dr. Gungil was awarded the County Service Award by the trustees. Obviously, you weren't able to make it to receive the award in person, I know some of the freeholders were there to accept it on your behalf. Commissioner Lepore gave a very moving and tear-jerking speech on your behalf. I think he read what he wrote. But it is certainly the theme this evening of honoring some of our outstanding employees, and they're all outstanding, and so you weren't able to make it, so Commissioner Lepore wanted to present you the plaque in person.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much, Dr. Gungil. It was an honor to receive this award on your behalf, along with my commissioner who attended down there. We were all so very proud of anything that you've done, on how you represent the county, the work that you do while you were away. There was a void in the county, and I'm so happy to see you back. I saw you last week, I was excited to see you in your office. It kicked me out, but that's okay. But on behalf of New Jersey Association of Counties, we just wanted to recognize you, all the work that you do as the Director of the Health Department of Passaic County.
Thank you, everyone. I'm not a crier, but really, that was very moving, I really, I'm grateful, thank you. And I love what I do.
We probably should, right? We need our photographer and Dr. Gungil to come back up, we'll take a little quick picture.
Anybody going down, put a mask on.
Do you need a mask?
Don't give him a dirty mask out of your pocket, Steve.
It's like loose candy, you can't do that.
Want a mint, little boy?
Ketchup stains on there, is there?
Ketchup stains on there, is there?
Ew.
Probably.
I didn't even look.
We need one more.
What are we missing?
Thank you.
Got the memo.
Turned it comes there.
I did get them.
Yeah.
I don't know if they would allow it.
Maybe, you know.
All right.
That's true.
Here we go, someone in here. One, two, three. And one, two, three.
Don't pretend you don't like it either.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner reports.
I'm sorry, Commissioner, if I could just mention one other thing that I wanted to mention while Dr. Gungil was here. We are in conversation with the state of New Jersey, Department of Health. They are interested in opening up a mega site or vaccine and booster. So we've been working with them, we're trying to locate a facility that we can do that. So we're hoping that sometime in the next month or so, that we'll have more information for you. But we are working towards that, and the state is anxious to open one up here in Passaic County. So we're thankful for that as well.
Under Commissioner Reports, I just have a couple of things. M-16, the resolution in your packet tonight, colleagues, is the resolution that will validate the, if it passes, the shared service agreement with the consolidation of the jail with the Bergen County facility. We've talked about it at length. It was a very hard and arduous task to get all the players together, to get all the issues resolved. I want to congratulate our administrator, Anthony De Nova, our sheriff, all the stakeholders who came and sat around the table, Assemblywoman Siobhan Sumter, the court was represented, the PBA was represented right here in Passaic County, and also communications with the Bergen County folks. So we're very happy that we've come to this point in time. We're hoping that by the end of January or early February, that the entire transition will take place and we'll be able to move on. Just a couple of things, I think I mentioned it last time, but the jail, the current jail on Grand Street, we're still going to use a portion of it for a hub in order for the court appearances by the inmates. So that rather than to deal with the traffic coming down from Bergen County, even though it's not that far, but early in the morning, you never know what's going to happen there. So the sheriff had indicated, and the courts also asked, that the inmates be available in the morning, like they would be if they were here. Well, they will be here in the hub. Anywhere from fifty to a hundred inmates will be there for their court appearances. Some of it will be done virtually from Bergen County. It all depends on the level of the issue. And the courts really aren't back up to speed on that issue. But hopefully, once they do get back in the routine, or the normal, whatever that'll be at the time, we'll be able to move everything much quicker. In terms of savings, initially, unlike when we closed our other facility, the savings was immediate. This one, it's going to take a little longer. It's actually going to be a little more costly in the next budget because we're sending people over right now, and we have to pay to house them in Bergen County right now, prior to the agreement. Once the agreement's in place, and, you know, in the next six to eight weeks, everything will be resolved and we'll be able to start saving money on that. The jail is a significant part of our budget, and it has to be dealt with. We can't build a new jail, number one. We can't afford to build a new jail. So this is, in my view, the best-case scenario. We have a fairly new facility in Bergen County to deal with versus a very old antiquated facility here in Passaic County. I'm very hopeful that we will be able to use some of the savings that we'll get down the road to establish needs for opioid abuse, the needs of the folks when they get out of incarceration, to help them get back into the flow of everyday life. And that takes money. And hopefully, we will at some point, sooner than later, be able to accommodate some of the programs that will be available and necessary in order to facilitate the, to prevent these folks from ending up back in the same place again, which is really what we should be striving to do. So with that, again, it's M-16, the shared service resolution. And I'll let, I mentioned also, I was with Commissioner TJ Best today. We went to see the ribbon-cutting of the new facility. I'll bow to you and let you give the details, but the old Don Bosco High School that was on Union Avenue in Patterson, across from the firehouse there, and there are many, many years, graduated a lot of people, it was a great facility, but it needed to be updated. So thanks to the efforts and the support of Joseph Taub, the kids got a phenomenal, I tell you, it's a phenomenal-looking school. I would love, I mean, if I had kids, I would love to see them in that facility. I'll let you pick up on that, too. Deputy Director, James, you have anything?
No, actually, I was going to ask about the jail, you see, as that important, I'd really love to hear all about the new school. I think we could hear, so I'd prefer you.
Commissioner Bartlet?
Excellent, excellent.
TJ?
We'll let you talk to John, because they won't call on me like that. I think it's good to have the conversations simultaneous about what we're doing, closing the jail but building a new school. And when we look at where we are in society, if you're talking about investing money, that's where you want to invest the money. The cost of the school was substantial. It was paid for through the SDA, Patterson, the Abbott School District, or former Abbott School District, which is now all underneath the SDA. And it has the oldest facilities in the state of New Jersey. Patterson has the most number of schools over a hundred and twenty years, more than any other city in the state of New Jersey. It has the most need. And when Don Bosco went offline as a private school, and the school district took it over, we moved our middle school in there because they were expanding. And Patterson, as we've seen from the last census, has grown substantially. Over the course of the last, I would say, five years, they've added over 10,000 units of housing. That is huge. That has an impact on our overall census. But, you know, someone has to think, where are these kids going to go to school? So it's really nice that the kids and the children of the city finally have a facility that they deserve, the Joseph A. Taub School. They couldn't have named it after a better person. It actually came between Joseph Taub, who was the founder, along with Senator Lowenberg of PDP, founded here in the city of Patterson. He's contributed scholarships and money towards kids forever, including, he also was an owner of the Nets, and constantly invited students up there to play in basketball games for their championships. So it came between him and his longtime friend Larry Doby. And I think that the next school, if we ever get to it, would actually be named after Larry Doby, who was another Patterson great. But to be able to have this facility, which is going to accommodate over 1,100 students in the city, is huge. But again, you know, I would much rather see us as a society, as a county and state, to invest money towards preventing individuals from going into incarceration by providing quality educational environments and space than to invest more money into a jail. So I'm all in favor of building schools, not jails. And I think that voting on this particular resolution today, we're showing that investment towards our future. That being said, also, Bergen County is a better facility, and we have a newer facility, it's a nicer facility. You know, our guys and gals who work in the county jail do a great job maintaining what they can. But, you know, at the end of the day, it's not a great facility. So they do a great job maintaining it, but it's in bad shape. So when you compare the experience that our inmates are going to get at Bergen County versus what they will receive in the state-county facility, I think it gives them a better chance to truly rehabilitate and prepare themselves to return back to our community and to our society and be productive citizens. So I think this is a win-win standpoint for both our taxpayers and our budget, as well as for the inmates who find themselves needing that rehabilitation. Again, people who go to our jail, these aren't life sentences. You know, they're not going to be in there for, you know, ten, fifteen, twenty years. They're in there for a short period of time, and then they come back into our community. We want to make sure when they go in there, it's a one-stop shop, and they're not returning back over and over again. Having a better facility to rehabilitate, I think, is a win-win. So I'm excited about us. I think Bergen County is also a win for them, too. And I think our leadership with Anthony De Nova for really seeing this through. So Tony, thanks for all your work negotiating this deal. Matthew, as well. This has, actually, I want to say it wasn't easy, but it's been easier having everyone at the table. I think having the unions at the table, having the community at the table, having the sheriff at the table, and everyone open and understanding that this is the best solution makes it work great. Last thing I want to add is that I'm excited that the sheriff puts together a plan that is going to be able to save all the jobs of all of the individuals currently working at the jail. So for anyone out there, family members, if you have friends that work in jail, let them know that they still have a job. And I'm excited about the plan that the sheriff put in place to allow them to not just have a job, but actually have a meaningful job, where we're going to be able to provide some of these services out in the community, even more so than what we're doing now. So the job all over.
Yeah, and TJ, I would like to add to that also, that this action that we're taking will actually put more law enforcement on the street. As you know, as some of you may or may not know, when a municipality arrests someone, they have to bring that individual down to Passaic County Jail, they have to process them. Now, I mean, my former mayor here in Woodland Park said, he's right next door, and even being next door, he ties up an officer for anywhere from two to four hours, depending. The processing takes a long time. You take a town like West Milford or Ringwood, the travel time is three hours both ways. So we are, the sheriff is going to plan to go to the municipality and transport the prisoner from the particular municipality down to Bergen County and process them. And the, I'm sorry, take him down to Passaic County, process him, and then take him to Bergen County. The municipality will be able to keep that officer inside the town, serving the residents of that particular community. It's even worse if an inmate has to go to a hospital, because usually, those stays are quite extensive. So now, the sheriff's department will also engage in providing that service. So all in all, without hiring new people, you're actually putting more people, more law enforcement in the sixteen municipalities to serve their residents and to keep their residents safe. So I just wanted to add that thing. Any questions, folks? Terry Duffy?
I have a couple to follow. TJ, I want to congratulate that committee for the transition. Most important, that the president's willing to.
I'm sorry, yeah, someday I'll get this down. TJ, that was a great, I know. I want to congratulate the committee who put this all together, it's well thought. Most importantly, we're not going to lose any employees, and it should be a smooth transition, it's well thought out. I want to wish everyone happy holidays, Merry Christmas, safe year '22, hopefully, and God bless Passaic County. Good job.
You going New Year's? You got any?
Duffy's tavern will be open, and we have a new place now, up in Wanacoo called The Knot, and they'll be open, you know, 24/7, you know, no problem. Thank you for the plug. Merry Christmas, everyone. Merry Christmas.
Yes. So as a third commissioner on the committee about the jail, I just want to speak to the process that we took, coming to the conclusions that we came to. This agreement between Passaic County and Bergen County, it took probably six months of meetings, if not less. And the process where we brought together, you know, three of our commissioners, our administration, our county council, our sheriff, warden, and very importantly, the PBAs that represent our corrections officers, had a seat at the table. And from, and I've talked to a lot of our corrections officers, who were so thankful that they had the opportunity to have a voice in the decisions that were being made. It could have been a contentious and challenging committee, and coming to a consensus could have been tough, but it wasn't. Every single meeting that we had, right in this room, everybody was on board, everybody's voices were heard. And I think that's the process, the process of working together to come to a collaboration and cooperation where everybody felt that their voices were valued. And through that process, we did what was best, I believe, for our inmates, because they are going to a pretty new jail, where they will have programs that we couldn't offer due to the physical space of the jail here in Passaic County. Because we have, and I've said this many times, the best sheriff officers in the state, and the jobs that they did were second to none. And we all walked into this meeting knowing that our primary concern was making sure that our officers kept their jobs. And that's what we strived for, and that's what we have achieved. So if anybody has any questions about how this was done, and if everybody was on board, 100% everybody was on board, and moving forward to put programs into place that will decrease the recidivism of being put into a facility, it's a win-win situation. So I couldn't have been more proud to work with the committee that we were on, and to work on the process the way it was, was second to none. And moving forward, I know that what we're doing is in the best interest of everyone involved. So I would like to thank everyone for everything that they've done and to make this the best decision that we could have made. Thank you.
Okay. We have no communications. I'll take, I'm sorry.
Really, this was, you all spoke so beautifully. All I have to say to folks is Merry Christmas, have a safe and happy holiday.
Very good. Okay, no communications. I'll take a motion to open the public portion of the meeting.
Make that motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Duffy.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bartlet. Roll call.
County Commissioners Bartlet.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Lazara.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lepore.
Yes. Anyone from the public wishing to be heard, please step up to the podium. The new technology here, you'll see a red, yellow, and green light. When the red light lights, it will ask you to end your comments. And also, state your name and address, and please keep in mind, anything that you say is a matter of is a matter of public record. Thank you.
Jay Cullen, 2319 Warrens Way. First of all, I'd like to commend the county administrator, Dr. Gungill, Kelly. I've worked with them in various cases. In fact, I brought some groups to the opening of the Day Mansion, so I'm familiar with the work they do, and they all do tremendous work in this county. I have a beef with some of the commissioners. At the last, a couple of meetings ago, I spoke against the expansion of Passaic County Tech, and I've spoken against it many times. I think it's not in the best interest of the entire county. I got demeaned and denigrated by someone who told me that the commissioners have nothing to do with education. They have nothing to do with the county vocational school. But in fact, I saw in the minutes that were published today that the resolution reappointing the members of the Board of Education had to be approved by the commissioners. That's part of the law. And in fact, the law says that the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Passaic is vested with managing the property, finances, and affairs of the county. It seems to me to say that the Board does have some say in the education and some say in Passaic County Vocational. I know school law. I took school law as an administrator. And I know that generally speaking, it's the state that has the ultimate power in education, and then the Boards of Education. But the county does have a say in a vocational school, which is a county school. Secondly, I was told that this wouldn't cost anything, that the county isn't paying anything, and yet you passed a resolution which bonded a certain amount of money to match the amount of money that we need to, we don't have to pay most of it, but we have to pay something. And that amount of money will come out of a bond, and ultimately, the Passaic County residents are all responsible for paying off that bond. I was also told that, oh, the other, the school districts don't, aren't opposed to this. They don't have a problem with it. Well, I have a whole pile of things that I mined off of the Google, and it shows that Manchester Regional, Passaic Valley School, Wantacue, Clifton, all of these schools, the Boards of Education are very upset that you are, that that particular school has an unfair advantage because it's been given huge facilities, tremendous facilities, which they can't afford, or if they do afford, then the taxes of the individuals in those communities are impacted. It's sort of upsetting to me that I come here, and I knew you'd pass that particular rule, but you didn't have to pick on me. You didn't have to say that because I don't get a chance to respond after you make those comments. Thank you.
Anyone else in the public wishing to be heard?
Tom Conway, 19 West Circle, Ringwood, New Jersey. We talked last meeting. Ringwood's full of union workers right now. We've got a lot of good union jobs up there, cleaning Superfund site. It'd be nice if we got union jobs up there that didn't involve toxic waste dumps, expanding pipelines. Commissioner Lepore, looked at one of your emails from siro@njlecet, talking about how Passaic County needs more natural gas. Boy, was she off-base. But your reply, rest assured, my opposition to this resolution and support for the trade unions is solid. I'm also lobbying my fellow commissioners. Commissioner Lazzara, you had, previous times, supported the resolution to oppose the pipeline, but Commissioner Lepore stated before the vote that you were against it at that point. So maybe he was successful in that, but I'll let you guys debate that. But who are we really going against? Joseph De Sanctis. He's the heavy hitter that TGP hired. He's been going around the state when he bothers to show up to a meeting pushing this pipeline. But what I'm really here to talk about is the new development. There's a new development. On the FERC website, an energy insider who's got some new green energy patent, and I'm not one of those environmental whacks, I'm not all about like this or that. This is my town. This is the only thing I'm talking about. This project's unnecessary. He put in his filing, guess what? There's excess capacity in the pipeline today. The whole process is rigged. Let me explain how it works. When TGP says we need more gas in this pipeline, there's a drawback period. There's periods for companies who have committed to take up a certain amount of the pipeline pressure and say, you know what? We'll give you that back. ConEd needs it. But there's an industry sort of wink, wink, nod, nod between the companies that says you never intervene, you never give back your pressure, your share of that pipeline, because you got to let them build it because they'll get in your way later down the road. So that's how we, the pipeline's never even reached max capacity at this point. So what are we really talking about? We're not talking about new homes in Westchester County. Those will be banned soon from gas hookups. What we're talking about is working against the Democratic policies in the Northeast to get us off fossil fuels. And TGP's in this to make money. TGP, if they get this excess capacity, it's not for today's need. It's for when the politicians, the Democratic politicians, shut down energy in the Northeast. TGP's got the pipeline space, and they will turn that into a giant profit. That's who wins. It's tomorrow's profits, not today's need. Dan Ortega, 275 of his members and families live in Passaic County. I can only hope that you put their union homes and their union lives ahead of their jobs and their money. That is what we're talking about here. Lastly, sounds great about the jail. I'm learning a little bit coming to these meetings. And to everyone, have a great Christmas, and I look forward to seeing you in 2022. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wishing to be heard?
Seeing no one at the podium, I moved to close the public portion.
Made by Commissioner Duffy.
Second.
Second by Commissioner James. Roll call.
County Commissioners Bartlet.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Lazzara.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lepore.
Yes. By the way, Jay, I'll give you the opportunity after the meeting, if you want to have a conversation with me. This way, we can discuss whatever's on your mind. All right. Next, we have L. Need a motion?
I'll move it.
Motion made by Commissioner James.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lazzara. Any discussion? Roll call.
County Commissioners Bartlet.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Lazzara.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lepore.
Yes. Consent agenda, we're going into executive session.
Yes, Director, there's no late starters. There is a need to go into executive session and discuss pending litigation against the county. We have a motion to do that.
Okay, I think you need a motion to go into executive session to discuss pending litigation. Motion made by Commissioner Bartlet.
Second.
By Commissioner Lazzara.
Complete the agenda and then go into, we're not going to take action on.
Yeah, we could do that.
Yeah, let's do that.
You want to go to the agenda?
Lawyers, everybody can.
Okay, I can hold that motion, right?
I withdraw it.
Okay. Consent agenda? I need a motion.
I'll move it.
Before you do that, can I ask for number 53 on the consent agenda to be removed and separately voted?
Number 53?
The fee schedule for events in the parks.
You want that voted on separately?
I do.
Okay.
Or, you know, I can be recorded as a no, but I understand our policy is to separately vote. That would be correct.
All right, so I'll move it, all but that resolution.
Well, no, Director, through you, you need a resolution. So Commissioner Bartlet, you're making a resolution to remove, is it M-53 from the consent agenda?
Correct.
So we need a second for that.
All right, a second.
Motion made by Bartlet, second by James, to remove, M-53 to be voted on separate. Roll call.
County Commissioners Bartlet.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Lazzara.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lepore.
Yes.
Yeah, then do a resolution to approve M-1 through M-52.
M-1, 2.
M-52.
67.
We talked about 53, right? So M-1 and M-52.
And M-54 through M-67.
Yeah. We would vote on that motion and then vote on the separate one and then vote on the final portion. Does that make sense?
Oh, all right. So we got to go in numerical order.
I think that makes the most sense, right?
Okay.
Okay. I need a motion for M, M-1 to M-52.
Prove it.
Second.
Motion made by Lazzara, second by Bartlet. Roll call.
County Commissioners Bartlet.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Lazzara.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lepore.
Yes. I need a motion on the resolution, M-53. Need a motion.
Second. Oh, I'll move it.
Motion made by James. Move it.
A second by Lazzara.
Roll call.
Could I, could I just?
Go ahead.
And I apologize, I didn't have the chance to speak with you all about this prior. I took a look at the list of fees, and, you know, I regard our parks as a public good. And the fact that we're adopting a set of fees that range up to $25 per person for certain events, up to $300 per team for certain events, you know, those aren't particularly consequential in the larger context of our county budget, but they're incredibly consequential for certain potential users of our parks. So while my vote may be symbolic, that's my reason for opposing M-53.
Okay. You have a roll call?
County Commissioners Bartlet.
No.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Lazzara.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lepore.
Yes. I need a motion for M-54 to M-67.
I'll move it.
Second.
Moved by James, second by Lazzara. Roll call.
County Commissioner Bartlet.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Lazzara.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lepore.
Yes. Need a motion on personnel?
Personnel agenda.
Motion made by James, second by Lazzara. Roll call.
County Commissioners Bartlet.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Lazzara.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lepore.
Yes. Need a motion on personnel?
Personnel agenda.
Motion made by James, second by Lazzara. Roll call.
County Commissioners Bartlet.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Lazzara.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lepore.
Yes. Need a motion to go into executive session, right?
Make that motion.
Motion made by Duffy.
Second.
Second by Bartlet. Roll call to go into executive session.
County Commissioners Bartlet.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Lazzara.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lepore.
Yes.
We have a swift conclusion. Recording now, Mike. Okay.
I just have to take a motion for adjourn, right?
Oh. I need a motion to come out of executive session.
I'm moving.
Motion made by Duffy, second by Bartlet. Roll call.
I don't care.
Duffy and Bartlet?
Yes.
Commissioner.
County Commissioners Bartlet.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.[1764.54]